Hey, well, thank you.
Action. Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Village of New Falls Planning Board meeting, a regular meeting on June 4th, 2024. I am Rick Sudo, and I'm the acting chair for tonight in Zach Byliki's absence. I also wanna, and I'll ask for your consideration and grace for that, and also want to introduce Mike Faden, the newest member of the village team, who in a different capacity will, in a different role, but in the, in his new capacity, will be filling the responsibilities that Autumn had for planning and zoning. So we're excited to have Mike, he's got lots of experience, and he hit the ground running as far as I can tell, so thanks, Mike, for being here. Um, so we have, we have, we have five applications to review today and a couple other things to handle upfront. So we'll get started, please, with the approval of the May 21st minutes. Is there any further discussion about those minutes? And if not, can I have a motion to approve the May 21st minutes?
So moved.
Second, can I ask, since I'm still ordering names, if you could just?
Yeah.
Amy Cullen, so moved.
Thank you, Terry Dolan, second, appreciated very much.
And all in favor?
Hi.
I wasn't at the meeting.
I wasn't at the meeting.
Yeah.
Clever pun, so, but we have enough votes.
To approve the meeting, the minutes, even if I wasn't there.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you reviewed it.
I tried, but okay, who wants to add that access thing came up?
Okay, thanks. Um, there's someone else in the waiting room, uh, Mike?
Great.
All right, great, um, and just in time, Bill Murray, we have any updates from the village board or also county planning board?
Uh, sure, uh, just briefly, no real update from the last meeting, it's kind of playing, moving to tomorrow. To reiterate what you said, my being has begun, I've worked with Mike on the planning board for about eight years. With Mike speaking, listen, he's been a terrific asset to our county and to our region, and once again, I want to welcome Mike to the Village of New Falls.
Great.
So that's my update.
The flapping because of three?
Yeah. Well, you did the intro justice, I didn't want to act like I could introduce Mike properly, so thanks for that. And then any updates from the environmental policy board liaison?
Um, I don't know, I don't think we've met since the last, and we only meet once a month.
Okay.
So we had a joint meeting now, and it was maybe this, I was at the last meeting, so yes, I have an update. Um, we had a joint meeting and we discussed a variety of things. It seems like it's gonna be, would be very complicated to merge the two boards, and now it's probably the best thing to do, because we have such a small board in the village, and because the environment doesn't really care about municipal boundaries, and the most of the property that has environmental resources is right on the edge of the village and town, in fact, it almost always gets annexed in one way or another. So it would make sense for those two boards to be together, but the bureaucratic gobbledygook that we would have to go through would be crazy, so I think, I, I don't know whether that's gonna get resolved or how that's gonna get resolved, but I think we're gonna try to meet together more often, because a lot of times we don't have quorum, we have no, almost no members on the village environmental policy board. And so that would be really good if that could happen. Um, and they expressed some concern about the sewage treatment plant, because you know it's under a consent order, and the, even though we're gonna be putting in all these new developments, and they all have to make pump stations or whatever, it still all has to go to the sewage treatment plant. So they were expressing some concerns about that, um, and I'm not sure what, what else really came up, but there's gonna be, you know, there's gonna be, uh, we have a new town supervisor, um, who's, uh, you know, very aware of environmental issues and everything, so we're, we're, so, um, and they, oh, they want to, they don't want us to, the town, some of the people in the town don't think the village should annex the property at New Falls Apartments. They think that the town should stay in the town, and then the town should just buy the water from the village and sell it back to the people, I don't know, that's, that's about it, in a nutshell.
Okay.
I hope I did.
Thanks, Rachel.
You're welcome.
And we have a report from the town thing.
Um, it wasn't on the agenda, so I didn't know if you wanted me to do it or not.
Excellent.
But I do not, I did not prepare one for this evening, because I didn't know if you wanted one or not.
No problem.
But if it is on the agenda, I'll be happy to prepare one in the future.
Yeah, let's make sure we do that, Mike, the, uh,
work from the town anymore?
Yes, I usually do that if it's on the agenda.
Yeah, I just copied the previous agenda, so we will.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, thanks, everyone, for reporting in. Next, we have the opportunity for public comment, this is for public comment on any issue that you want to bring to the planning board, not for any particular application. So is there anyone online and or person for public comments? Okay. Um, and we don't have any public hearings today, uh, so we'll move right on to the first application for review.
Should, should we note that there were public hearings scheduled for tonight, but we were unable to advertise them on time, so we'll be rescheduling those.
Okay.
Think anyone was here for that necessarily, it wasn't on the agenda, but in case anyone was wondering.
Okay, so.
How many of them were there?
There were two.
Who were they?
The 218 main, which will reschedule, and the, uh, was there two today?
18 Mulberry.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, but it was scheduled for a public hearing today, I believe, but it didn't get advertised in time, so that public hearing will be rescheduled.
Oh, so what's the next?
Uh, the application review was the fourth. Sorry, Rachel.
That's okay, thanks for clarifying that, uh, so in each, within each one of those applications, we'll get that out. Is there a, was there, is there something we want to share about the way, the reason that the advertisements didn't get out?
Don't know the details.
Okay, it's just administrative.
I believe so.
Mike, anything we want to explain for the?
No, I don't know, because before I was, I started the day after Memorial Day, which would have been too late, but I actually wasn't aware that there were any schedules, so, but we will definitely get these out in the next couple days, so they can be scheduled for the next meeting.
Okay, so during each one of the applications, we'll explain to the applicant just how that works and how we're gonna ensure that it won't go wrong in its time. So the first application for review is PB 24-08, 21 Colonial Drive, the applicant is New Falls Gardens, which is a site plan amendment for a pool and clubhouse. He come up? Hello.
Carmella conflict, out of New Falls Gardens.
Thanks. Thanks, Carmella. So we remember this application for site plan amendment involving replacing a pool, adding landscaping and walkways, and adding a two bathroom addition on the outside of an existing garage at an existing multifamily apartment complex, uh, the project is on an 11 acre site in the R3 zoning. Uh, this application's been reviewed through a couple of meetings, and I think in our last meeting, we had no further questions or comments and agreed to draft the resolution. Um, so before I get into the resolution, you have any question, or any members of the board have any additional questions?
Um, last time we were here, you mentioned an openness to looking into what types of pesticides are applied on the grounds. And so I'm curious as to if you have anything to say about it. Um, do you want to give me your email address? I've been sent to you.
Sure.
That's that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks for the, yeah.
I don't think you've heard of this. How do I, what's the best way for me to contact you to give you my email address? Can I give you my email address?
Uh, sure.
Okay, C, 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 O, N, K, L, Y, N, at Camson, with a K, A, M, S, O, N, C, L, R, P, dot com. And you can, it's on file, too, you can probably get it in case.
Great. You can get it from Mike, if you missed that.
Yeah, he definitely does.
Um, any other question?
Thank you for taking pride in your property and improving it.
Yeah, it's gonna be so much better.
Sounds great.
So looking forward to it. Yeah.
Good.
It's not pretty right now. We'll, we'll get there.
So, uh, as usual, we will look, we'll read through just the, the unique components of the application, so remember, uh, the summaries, they seek to, uh, seeks approval of the site plan amendments to the New Falls Gardens apartment complex, to replace an existing pool, add landscaping, and construct a two bathroom addition on an existing garage. Um, the property is an 11 acre lot located 21 Colonial Drive, New Falls. Um, and the typical elements of the site plan are here, and there's one specific condition. Uh, and the condition is this approval applies to the area of the property surrounding the pool, as shown in the plans referenced above. With the exception of the amendments approved herein, the requirements of the original 1965 site plan, and any subsequent amendments approved by the planning board shall remain in effect. Do you have any questions about that? Makes sense. Okay, so with that, uh, we can move for, like, typically do a voice vote of each member whose names you don't know, so we'll have to both offer our names and our vote, and, and then we'll sign, record this, and also the, the resolution has Zach's name, I'm just gonna cross it out and put mine as a choice. So, um, how about we start at this end of the table, uh, for a voice vote, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
So the move is Terry Dolan.
Sure.
Second, Rachel Lagasca, and then let's all just share our name and our vote.
Terry Dolan, yes.
Rachel Lagasca, yes.
Rich Sudo, aye.
Amy Cullen, aye. Nikki Nielsen, aye. What's that?
Great, uh, so the resolution's approved. And.
So I just said it. Congratulations, thank you.
Great, congrats.
Thanks, thank you, Drew.
Thank you, thanks.
Thanks.
Um, next application is a site plan amendment for mixed use uh, for PB 24-11 to 18 Main Streets. Um, is there anyone from there here today? Okay. Well, maybe they might have been informed that there was no public hearings, so they aren't here today. Um, well, let's take a look at, uh, what we know or need to know about the application and see if, uh, there's anything we want to, move forward or comment on that might be relevant the next time they're here. So, um, I'm looking for an email, um, so if we recall, uh, it's a previous approved site plan, the renovated existing office building, uh, the application requests, at this time, the application requests amendment of the site plan to change the first floor of the building to a retail bakery, uh, which is a permitted use, and make various changes to the site design. Um, I know it says retail bakery, and I don't know, uh, the exact terminology, but we also, uh, just determined in some of our prior conversations that it's a retail bakery that also is producing baked goods that will sell outside of their, so it's technically also a wholesale operation, um, by virtue of that. Um, and, uh, and there's special use permit approval for outdoor cafe seating associated with the bakery. So what we were looking at in our last time together was kind of an integrated site plan. We, uh, considered traffic and parking, um, as consideration, given now that it's a, a retail establishment that will be seeing customers. Um, we decided that we are ready to move forward with the public hearing, and because the applicant, the, um, advertising didn't get out in time, it's not going to be tonight. So the first thing I'd like to do is, um, ask for a resolution for us, ask for motion for us to, uh, postpone the public hearing for PB 2411 to 18 Main Street from today, June 4th, to, uh, two weeks from today, June 18th meeting.
So moved, the second. Amy Cullen, so moved.
Great.
Rachel Lagasca, the second.
Thank you.
And in all the favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then, uh, Mike, they're not here, but just for the record, the assurance that we'll get the advertising.
Yes, we move into it. And to clarify, uh, there were a couple of questions you had about the grease trap.
Yeah.
I spoke with Alex, who verified that anything involving grease trap trap would be internal within the building, would be no, nothing exterior. Tried to get the plans to the, uh, the head of DPW, but he and I weren't able to connect. And so I will get them to him, but, uh, the feeling is anything with an exhaust would just be a small, uh, exhaust fan, uh, sort of cover on the side of the building, and that was Alex's, uh, two thoughts on the two questions that were raised.
Okay.
Okay.
And I know he also, uh, sent a memo about that, if anybody has any, so we can start there, thank you, Mike. Um, just the question around the commercial kitchen requirements that we learned about. Uh, one was the idea of grease trap, the other was the idea of the ventilation and any other, um, uh, mechanicals that might be evident from outside. Does anyone have any questions other than what Mike shared and what we received from Alex and his memo?
Um, I did have a couple of questions.
All right, so can I hold on one second, Amy, please? Let's, um, let's raise these as issues that we can record, and then we'll just have them recorded for when the applicant is here, because we'll, um, I don't want to lose, I don't want to lose your points, but at the same time, we don't have them here, so, yeah, what are the?
I'm not necessarily qualifying them as issues, they're just points that I want to bring up in a conversation with the applicant.
Great.
I'm curious, um, about the loading dock, about the volume of the wholesale, is this wholesale to a couple cafes that are local? Or are we doing large scale wholesale where we're shipping across the country, and we're delivering all over the place? Are there gonna be multiple trucks, or is there one truck, how many trips per day? Do we have to pick up the raw goods and, and bring them out? Um, so that's, you know, we have to get the stuff there, so we may be unloading. And then we also have the reloading, so that we can redistribute whatever been wholesaling. So that was the question that I had, this is gonna be a constant movement of trucks.
Great.
What are they baking, do you know?
Organic, um, baked goods, like vegan, 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 like. Like croissants.
So pastries, kind of like sweets, okay.
Breads. Maybe breads, too.
Okay.
I think they currently have or had a business on the other side of the river. Yeah.
I think. Yeah, you have to separate with that. Um, okay, thanks, Amy, so we'll make sure, you know, that, and one thing I would suggest is the site plan, um, you know, does count for sun loading, but I think in terms of volume and frequency.
That's just my question.
It's a good question.
It could be very bogeying that. We'll use an initiative at all.
Yep. Great, and, um, moving on to the next item, uh, there's, there, it, there are responses that the applicant furnished in the special use permit, um, that is in their application, uh, if anyone has, um, any questions about anything that was in there. Um, I, I personally thought that their responses were adequate, and that, uh, there really aren't any flags, uh, with regard to the, uh, the, uh, the elements of the application, the usage, um, any impact or disturbance that might be anticipated, but I'm just making sure others saw the few questions that they answered at the conclusion of the.
Um, where's the cafe? I don't, it doesn't, is it this?
The cafe is the, it's, it's, it's within here, the, the plan doesn't, in this particular diagram, it doesn't, it, exactly, and then it's the outdoor, it's here.
So that would be, it would be here?
Yeah.
Okay.
So any questions about their responses, uh, for the special use permit questionnaire?
Good.
Okay. All right, we've already rescheduled the public hearing, the last question, uh, for the board is whether we think, keeping in mind, this was already an approved application with some modifications that they're asking us to consider, and the, and the special use, which is approved use, which is a permitted use. Uh, do we believe that it should be re-referred to Ulster County Planning Board um, based on the changes that this, um, bakery use has proposed?
I was just going through and kind of making sure we checked all the boxes, and I just thought that it was worth the board.
Was it gonna be?
Deciding if these changes rise.
Wasn't, a, a new tenant wasn't ever proposed or contemplated, I think maybe it was gonna be professional offices of the owner. So it didn't have any kind of retail use or, you know, active commercial use in, in original application. I guess the questions would be.
Excuse me, was, uh, if I'm remembering correctly, wasn't that referred fairly recently, though?
Or? It's been, your memory is correct, it's been referred twice, because there was an amendment to the, um, original site plan.
Yeah.
Um, and I, personally, I don't think there's enough of a change here that we would need to, should not have any problems identified so far, but.
I agree, uh, I agree a hundred percent, I just want to make sure I let, uh, members of the board decide if they thought it was important.
You could do a referral resolution, and I can send it to them, and if they say, no, we don't need to see it, then you're covered. That is one way.
So the option for it to be referred if they ask for it.
Well, no, I would send it to them and have their referral director look at it, and oftentimes, look at it and say, no, you didn't need to send this.
And not wait for a meeting.
No.
How long would that?
Well, actually, I take that back, because we need tomorrow night, so it wouldn't be until, the referral would be reviewed until
Next one.
Uh, July.
Yeah.
So.
I, unless you think otherwise, Mike, I don't think it's.
It was recently referred, so I don't believe it is.
Changes are not extended enough to recall. Uh, do you agree with that? We don't need a resolution, just making sure there's no opposition like that.
They already made the, they already did the building, which looks really good, I mean, I like the big,
Yeah.
The big glass in the front is really nice. I hated when they made these buildings with these itty bitty windows. Uncomfortable without a referral.
Okay, great, all right, so, uh, we have a rescheduled, um, uh, public hearing, which we, uh, we already, uh, moved, we, uh, have comfort with the commercial kitchen requirements, and, um, Mike, you're gonna just triple check with DPW to make sure they don't have any new ideas about that, which we'll know before the next meeting.
Blue was out the last, or unavailable the last couple of days, so I'll connect with them.
No problem. Um, great, so that's as far as we can get from now, with, especially without the applicant present, but when they come back, we'll have a hearing, we'll make sure we ask the final questions about, uh, any of the items we have, and then that should put us in a position where we can, um, consider drafting a resolution. All right, uh, next application is a site plan review. It is PB 2410 18 Mulberry Street, it's a residential building converting, uh, a two family to a single family dwelling. Andrew Jesse Davis.
Yep.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Good. Hi, how are you?
Good. David Cubic from DKS New York Sex.
Okay, great, thanks. So we all recalls an application, uh, to renovate and build addition, two additions to an existing house, um, point six acres in R3 zoning. Um, it's currently a two family home, and the renovated structure will be a single family home with some additional features, uh, decks and a garage. Um, apologies if you weren't aware, uh, but we do need to reschedule the public hearing, there's a public notice requirement, uh, for the public hearing, which is 10 days. Uh, the public notice requirement.
There is.
Yeah, so it's 10 days prior to it, and that's obviously just to make sure that all of your neighbors are able to be informed about it and be here, and that didn't happen on schedule. Um, we did ask for some consideration, we're experiencing some transitions here, uh, we'll get it right. Um, so, uh, as long as we're on the subject, just ask for a, a motion to postpone the public hearing for PB 24-9 18 Mulberry Street from today to, uh, our next meeting on June 18th.
So moved.
Second, Terry Dolan, second.
So moved.
And Rachel. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay, great, so we'll have a public hearing, it'll be at the opening of the next meeting, so you could be here for, uh, yeah, that'd be great.
Do you think? I'm not sure I can.
Is it okay if the architect's not in person?
It is.
Okay.
Okay. The worst case, something can be toxic.
It could be on Zoom, you could, you could just learn the transcript.
Sure. Yeah, no, we'll have someone. Okay.
Right there. Great. It's not required.
Okay.
Um, it's sometimes neighborly, um, but it's not required.
We might just be in a town.
Yeah, it's okay, yeah, and then we're sorry, it's not today, when you were expecting it, so.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, no, it's, it's not required for you to be here, but.
Okay, great.
Um, okay, uh, the project was referred to DPW, uh, to review driveway and utilities, and I don't know, Mike, did we get any feedback on, uh, 18 Mulberry Street, 20 PB 24-9?
Not that I'm aware of. I can, uh, quickly double check your emails if you'd like, but nothing that I.
I don't think we did either, and if not, I think it would be helpful if you could just double check with them. I think you're gonna, about to check your email, uh, on live Zoom stream.
Oh.
Which I've done in my. I've done it lots of times. But, um, it, I, uh.
Add a few dimensions, just so they could see exactly where the driveway lands.
Okay, is that a new plan that would have that?
The one that we submitted for this hearing.
Okay.
Received new plans, yeah, so we should make sure DPW gets the.
Gets the newest one.
Okay.
And they, they did include the things we discussed, like, uh, the setback and removing the outline, that's.
Oh, yeah, right.
Legacy line, yeah.
Okay, great, so there's a new plan, uh, submitted, that is in the rec, I didn't know that that was in the folder, but we can take a look at that before the public hearing, just in case.
Yeah.
It's also good that that's now submitted, because that can be the plan, the public can, the public can see. If they have any questions about the hearing, that will also be the basis for a quick review from DPW, just to make sure the driveways and utilities all, um, meet their, um, requirements around safety and use. And, um, in the new plan, would, would you mind if you could share, was it one of them?
Can you show the date of the new plan was 5/28, 24?
Uh, don't know, this date is fresh, you were nuts. But I know we sent all new part copies to planning, and so this is.
On that plan, the, the one other point we had is, was the discussion about the potential for the solar array that you were considering putting on a portion of the addition.
Correct.
And, um, how is that currently labeled?
We talked about removing, um, uh, the word possible, so it, it just simply says future solar panel array.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Which, which one is it?
Um, A10, A102 would be the best. What's the, people sleep, oh.
Probably one that isn't showing. Let's just call now. And privacy. Like this. This one?
No.
I don't see a 102. Okay.
I know, that's not it either.
Yes, I see everything except the 102.
Strange.
And 101.
Well, I can give you that half size, so if you'd like. It's just, it should be the same.
Yeah, none of them relate to one which is.
So while we're looking, just be reminded, we were just confirming that the way that solar array, that possible future solar indicated on the plan, is something that we wanted to go ahead and approve for future, um, uh, so that option to be for them for the future. Reviewing possible makes it just better that it says future solar array. So, um, I don't even think that would require any special condition or anything in the resolution, it's just an approval.
Go get it permanent anyhow.
Yeah, they'll still have to get building.
Yeah, I just wanted to check with the code enforcement officer that he wasn't pulled up a CO until that was in place, but he said now, he said, it's just a future.
Great, and let's make sure that's on.
The only other new piece of information on there is the, um, mechanical equipment on the right side of the house, which we spoke to Autumn about. Um, so she's. So she cited the section that we needed to comply with. You can see there's a little text out there.
Yeah.
So that's where we would locate the condenser units with a little simple enclosure like that section asks for.
Yep.
So that, that's the only new piece of information that you didn't see last time.
Okay, so it indicates, it demonstrates where the enclosure will be and that it is finished to match the new siding.
Correct.
And that it's above the base plane of the mechanicals themselves.
Yeah.
Which is according to the code. And all of the setbacks include that enclosure. Does the side setback include that enclosure?
It's within that setback.
To setback, yeah.
Okay.
Might be okay. There's some.
Did I ask Autumn that specifically? And she just said that as long as we meet that standard in that section that's listed there, that it was okay. As long as it was within an enclosure.
What is side yard setback?
It's probably twelve five.
Sometimes there's something about
twelve six.
protruding from the building that are okay.
Yeah.
Building's thirteen three.
Yeah, the side yard, the side setback is twelve and a half. And
closures.
Mike, is that something you can confirm for us? What we're asking about is the mechanicals in the enclosure. And they just don't move us off memory. And the mechanicals in the enclosure are in the the, the setback. And so they end up.
I will go double check the code, but I believe those are exempted.
Yeah.
If they're the mechanical. Let me.
Okay.
I can probably actually just check if you're on my phone because.
And Autumn usually has a pretty good handle on that too, but just want to make sure so you're not having to change.
Not to put too fine a point on it, Mike, but it's not just the mechanical, these are enclosed mechanicals.
Okay.
Is it, is it on the ground or is it?
Yeah, on the ground. So the enclosure stretch is about five feet beyond the house so that it's midway almost into the setback. So we'll confirm that. And then it looks like the driveway and all of that is super clear in order to be considered by DPW.
And the utilities are noted on that plan too, in terms, like right at the front, you can see where the utilities are.
Yeah. Any other questions from members about this application?
I think to be fair to everybody, I think we do need the answer to that encroachment, if there is an encroachment in the side yard setback.
Yep.
Like you said. Sometime that easy to move those things from one side of a building.
Be important for us to have it on that side.
Wasn't bad.
Yeah, let's double front. Mike's gonna double check in the worst case scenario.
Did you say there was a section that showed cited?
Yes, I have it on that drawing. Section G four. Parenthetically F.
Well, what number?
Mechanical enclosure per section.
How searchable is it?
So it says here, the following projections into right required yards may be permitted. Open fire escapes, four feet in the side rear, audience of movable canopies, cornices, E's and other similar architectural features. Any open or enclosed porch or carport accessories used with non-enclosed in the building may be located in a rear yard. So that's the only ones I see in the code itself for the modification, but I'm, I'm not saying that it might not be somewhere else. That's all I'm finding at the moment.
Is that section that you're reading titled section G?
One, that's one forty dash twelve.
Okay.
Modification of yard required.
One.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Apologies. Google took me to town.
Ours is very similar actually, because I was looking, it has the fire escapes and all that.
Yeah, that, no, they're fairly standard qualities. Okay. Take a moment.
Share my suggestion. I understand that would be a, a big challenge and change. If Mike has the answer within minutes, then we'll have that answer within minutes. If not, maybe you could check back with the building department tomorrow. Because if it would, and, and it, it, I, it's my recollection that the mechanics themselves can, because of course they hang on the side of these buildings all the time. They split units. And once you've created the enclosure.
Well, and the only reason we created the enclosure is because I think the zoning section asks.
Requires it.
Well, the zoning enclosure, it's not really a building code issue, but it's the village new ball zoning section that we cited that said to issue enclosure.
Right.
So the permitted exception is actually pretty much mirror of the town, the open fire escape awnings. It is a letter E under one, two twelve dash nineteen.
Oh, wait, there's, I think I found. Oh, this, that's no wrong district, sorry.
So unenclosed accessory uses, but that's not specifically, I don't believe.
No.
Awnings and canopies, but this is.
That's not that either. All right, my suggestion.
We'll have to continue searching.
Yeah, my suggestion is we, but we definitely want to double check that. We want you to have that, that drive. And so what we can confirm is two things. One is whether it's true that it absolutely requires enclosure because I I, they may be pre-existing, but I know there are several that are not enclosed throughout different zones and, and areas in the village. So let's confirm it requires an enclosure. And then confirm the enclosure still have to be five feet into the setback.
Sure.
And, and if that is, if, if either of those things are, if those things both let us move this forward, then we'd absolutely be ready for the public hearing.
Sure.
If not, we could still hold the public hearing in our next meeting. But it may have a condition that says, or there may be a discussion about a change that's needed there. So that even if we pursue a resolution, it would have a condition that that change was going to be made before the resolution.
Sure.
Since it's not major and structural and all those other things, it can be something that we build into the but it would need to be.
Right. And is there any process for seeking like a variance or permission to do it if it didn't?
Yes.
Supply.
Uh, but.
Like the housing, part of the reason why they're there is because we're keeping the existing house and we need access to the cellar. Where all the mechanicals are.
Yeah.
So they'll kind of hemmed in.
Yeah.
We can't really flip it to another place, like the, the additions don't have cellars. So it's really the right place to do it. So if there's, and we are keeping the existing house, we're not starting from scratch. So is there any kind of relief there?
Oil tank or something?
I don't know, just like your air conditioning and condenser. You know, those little split system condensers.
Oh, the mini splits?
Yeah.
Those don't usually have any enclosure.
That's what we're gonna find out.
I've seen them all over the place. Seeing mechanical equipment.
I'll check that with Alex tomorrow.
Yeah. Double check the different zone, you know, sometimes they have different codes within the subway. So we're gonna check that. And yes, there is a procedure for variance. You would have to go to the zoning board of appeals. Which means we would refer you to the zoning board and then you would submit an application there. You would have a, a meeting there, you'd have a public hearing there and then you'd come back. It could be ninety days to, to get a variance for something like this if they were to approve it, if they were to approve it. So let's just try to make sure we can get you within code and then if we can't, that could be a decision you'd make.
Right. And then not to blabber this, but so could that be a condition like prior to?
No.
Sign off or anything?
No, we wouldn't be able to approve a resolution if you had a variance. Variance is something that has to be decided first and then it integrates into the application and then.
Makes sense. So we could come back, if we close the loop with you offline and that requires a variance, we can relocate them somewhere else that doesn't require a variance and then always pursue the variance later.
Um, yeah, as long as.
So you approve the location, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
We just don't want to hold up their ability to start.
Unit and having that go to different rooms. It makes a lot of time.
There are three years.
Great, but usually they're not, they don't even need to be in the same spot.
Well, let's then decide that based on first the determination of whether the code requires you to do it the way you're doing it and whether you're allowed to do it the way you're doing it. And we'll have an answer.
Okay.
And then we'll, I like the way you're thinking about working around it. Best case scenario, we'd find a place where it does fit according to code. And the worst case scenario is you could find a place that's less than ideal for you and have the application approved. And if you thought you wanted to do it differently later, you could, but you'd be taking the risk that the ZVA wouldn't approve it. And then you'd have to build it according to.
Understood.
Yeah.
Sure, I can get it answered from Alex tomorrow. So I can email everybody involved and.
Right on.
Write the answer by the.
And then lastly, I think, just from my own education, the public hearing is essentially the same format as this. It's just the ability for the public to make comment. That, just to set expectations.
Yes, people can submit written or appear for comment online or here.
Right.
And it happens at the beginning of the meeting. And we didn't have any today, but that's what would have happened at the beginning.
We should probably be ready to present from scratch for people who don't.
No, the way the public hearing works is it's based on all the prior conversation and, and, you know, application review that occurred at the meeting. Which is all available minutes and then also online, all your material is publicly available.
Okay.
So the public hearing, it's not a conversation, it's the public making comments in the context of the hearing.
Okay.
About your application, if any.
Yeah.
And then they conclude that. And then we have an application review.
Yeah.
That would consider any comments in the public hearing. But it's not a dialogue between the public and the applicant or the public and the board even. So it's basically people bringing things that we might have missed or that are particularly concerned to them. And it's often really fruitful, you know, things that we might not even know because we're not the neighbor and, and, but it's often also pretty quiet and low key and rather than all.
No problem. Just want to make sure we're understood.
Yeah, thanks for the questions. Anybody have anything else? All set. All right. So we'll get it to the next step. And thanks, Mike, for the commitment to that follow up.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. It's here. You can keep this one on.
Yeah.
All right. We're moving on to PB twenty four dash oh four three Water Street, the Herbal Confectionery LLC. Our board colleague Amy Cohen is recused from this application review. So she's going to sign a C in the audience. Hi, welcome.
Hi, good evening.
Can you identify yourself for Mike?
Yes, hi, Mike. I'm Michael Nelson, C, Chief Operating Officer of Herbal Confectionery LLC. Also here with us tonight, we have our Chief Executive Officer, Lisa Verone, who will be sitting down in just a moment.
Okay. Thanks, Michael. Thanks for coming back.
Yes, we appreciate it. And I know, sorry for any of the delays, but yeah, so here we have Lisa Verone. Yes, so sorry for the delay. It took us a little bit of time to get in touch with a land surveyor that could do a project of new lots on short notice. So we called up a friend and heard to take care of that. And we passed along to another engineer who submitted the details for the parking lot.
And sculpture park plan.
Right. I think that was something that we kind of touched base on at the last meeting, just needing a set of plans for.
This, this got put in the folder today, but that is the.
Yeah, that's what we said.
Okay.
I printed one copy, so.
And I have it in mind, so.
Yeah, it's in the folder.
Yeah, so that was in response to Alex's questions to the site plan that we submitted. I think it was just right before the Memorial Day holiday. So I know there was a little lapse between the.
It was actually right after.
Right.
Yeah.
I had a bit late last week.
And, and Mike, your Autumn's standing, that's correct.
Permanent.
And, and Alex and I spoke pretty thoroughly on this, so if the board would like, I could relay his questions and thoughts.
Okay, so let's, let's set the stage. We are three Water Street is a property. It's an application for site plan. Your application is for site plan as special use permit approval for your new use, which is the Herbal Confectionery. And it's an existing building, included twenty point two nine acre parcel. And the parking, which are both in the Gateway Zoning District. The new uses include a cannabis dispensary and a farm store on the first floor. And upstairs apartments will be used for office space and employee residential use. Parking is on a separate parcel across Water Street and that's what we're, sharing the diagram about. So as I understand, the way the, the, the property's use has, has, has come about is the farm store is already open and in operation because that was a permitted use that could begin happening immediately.
Correct.
And so that's already happened.
Yes.
You're proposing for the addition of the cannabis dispensary.
Yeah.
Which would then operate alongside of the farm store simultaneously at all times, depending on their own hours and, and things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I get a procedural question asked? Because the farm stand is an existing, it was already a retail store. The farm would, I think, be retail. I don't know exactly if it was. Once you add the dispensary, is this now a total re-review of including the farm store or is the farm store carved out of this review?
Yeah.
I, I do believe Alex worked pretty diligently to come up with some information regarding the use for the building. There wasn't a lot in the municipal records in terms of an existing site plan, or there was actually somewhat, some confusion about the use and the zoning. There was sort of in conflict with what the building was allowed to be used for, because according to the municipal search record, it was supposed to be a mixed use office. So there was sort of some confusion about that, but I believe Alex found something from.
It was a fire inspector.
So a variance dating back to the eighties that allows for four uses in the building. So four separate uses are allowed to be used there. And we are allowed, that building is allowed to have the two residential apartments, but it cannot be added. We cannot add residents to the existing two.
Yeah. And so farm store has its own egress. You cannot enter either of those locations through the building.
Okay, so let's, yeah. Cause I was just gonna ask if you could answer.
The farm store sell.
It sells.
We sell specialty produce and farm goods from the region. So we all, we also are the operators of another business, that's Windfall Farms LLC, the occupant of the farm store. And we're specialty products. We're no spray.
We're a generational family farm. So we have a slew of other farm, small farmers within the region that all sell value-added goods within our store and we sell our entire produce list as well as our value-added goods that we make.
Thanks. So to Nikki's question, which is the, the, the exist, that use is already underway. But Nikki's question was, do we now need to look at an integrated use of the property in the parking? Because they will now be operating simultaneously. And Emily, do you want to share that?
So there's, the, the basic issue we need to deal with is that there's no site plan for this site. It's been operating, you know, one business after another. But there is no site plan that's ever been approved by the planning board as to how the site is supposed to function. So as far as the uses, the code has certain uses that are permitted. And then there's a category for retail business or service, not otherwise specifically mentioned. And that's the one that we've put cannabis dispensaries in because it's not specifically mentioned otherwise. And that type of use is allowed by special use permit. The idea being that I think when they made the code, they decided things like grocery or, you know, certain types of uses would be allowed, but once they haven't thought of would have to be by a special use permit from the planning board. So the cannabis dispensary needs a special use permit. And because the, the, the code says that special use permits need to be in accordance with the site plan. And so that's why we, we really need to have a site plan for the whole site. Even though we don't need to approve the use of the farm and my store.
All right.
Cause that makes sense.
Right. And, and like, please forgive us, like, we're working, we want to work with you as best as we can.
Trying to scope out, like, what are we actually considering?
May I ask, when, when you say site plan, you mean of the interior of the building?
No, that's the exterior.
Okay.
So it's that type of stuff of things that are required for that.
Yes.
And so a lot of the things you have checked off NA, but they are applicable because we're, we need a site plan. And so a lot of the things you have checked off NA, but they are applicable because we're, we need a site plan, not just this special use permit.
Right, so I guess maybe, uh, while we're here today, uh, you know. Based on all of the plans that we've submitted so far, I think there are very few items that, uh. You know, we, we do not have on the official site plan, so I just wanna make sure that, uh. We can get a clear answer of what else we would need to be providing to get the special.
To make it a full.
And, you know, just coming from our position, uh, I want it to be stated that, you know, we are tenants of the building. We are not the building owners, we're the occupants, um. And, you know, we obviously are dealing with a situation where a business has been operating within the village limits for many decades. Without existing site plan. So, uh, you know, we wanna work with you to bring. This site up to an acceptable standard for the planning board. Um, so if there's anything that you see from our current site plan as proposed that we would, uh, you'd like to see added for the.
Yeah. I'm sure we have the qualifications to give you that information.
Right.
I will direct you to the municipal code enforcement.
I can tell you the things that Alex asked for previously, which many of them are answered on that one.
Yeah, we made sure to, his, he had sent us an email with a list designating for, uh, the outlines of the parking spot. The bike rack, uh, the dumpster, the handicap, the loading zone and the sign. Um, and those were his last requests to us. So we, yeah.
So, um. I mean, there, there are sixty four points, and so I'm not gonna be able to cross-reference. Thanks, Terry, I think that's right. Uh, if Alex, whose job it is to do that cross-reference is only identified those. Then that would be the right place to start, but I think once you've concluded the ones that Alex has mentioned on the list, if you have that list.
Which, yes, we have and submitted.
Then I would say that we would have Alex give one more review because we're seeing this in piece, pieces. So if you can complete those pieces, we can give it one more review. Um, you know, property boundary lines and dimensions clearly labeled is the third one. I don't see a plan. Does that one have that?
This would be.
With setbacks and property and that's the survey?
This is the survey. Uh, we provided you guys three compliments at this.
Okay, so this is that.
That's the survey.
That's the newest submission.
No, this is, this has been submitted, uh, this was submitted before the deadline for the meeting. Um, and then we've had an engineer do another layer, sorry for the small. Um, this is the parking lot detail.
And the sculpture park detail.
Right.
Uh, for our desire to add gardens.
So one example of this, uh, in a, in a, to, to answer the question of, we need to be considering this as a single. Um, as a single, as, as multiple uses for a single property or for site plan. So, uh. There would usually be a table that would indicate the parking requirement.
Mm-hmm.
For each of the businesses and combined, and then that, the number of parking spots that you've indicated satisfies that, is that?
And we did, so this is actually our second time submitting that.
Where is that?
Yes, so I did have, we've had an engineer originally submit, and I think that's where we said, without the survey completed. We wouldn't be able to add that additional information.
So you're not planning to modify the building or the parking lot? No, we, especially as renters, we are making, um, aesthetic updates, uh, we are making.
I like the removal of the butterflies.
Uh, we're, yeah, we're making aesthetic updates, um, we're adding a lot more order to the parking lot. Uh, cause there's just currently no perimeter of the parking lot really designation, other than from gravel to grass. Um, we're adding signage designating with each planter that we're putting in order to do the perimeter of the parking lot, as well as proper signs for crossing.
But we're not gonna, uh, it's not gonna get paved in any way and there's no grass, the, the little green overflow. There's just gonna be people parking on the grass.
Well, we will have, uh, planters as well as, uh, car stops to ensure where that car is meant to park. Cause it looks, I mean. I don't.
I mean, we're essentially using the parking lot as it has been used, and I know that we've, we reviewed the calculations without. We have adequate parking for both businesses, employees and tenants.
Is that, is that somewhere in a table?
One of these maps in a table, the way that.
I have like, I kinda have a scribble.
Let's just put it on.
Yeah, I have a scribble. I did, I'm sorry for the scribbled comment. This was the original.
At all into the grass.
No.
There between the parking lot.
Yeah, and that's actually.
Not gonna get.
No, that, that, that hill section is actually, once you hit that, that becomes village property. That actually is something, yeah. Um, so anywhere that is existing grass, we're only looking to add the implementation of. Uh, gardens and that is actually mostly to do with forcing pedestrian traffic back. To the rail trail, street crossing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so by adding the planters of the parking lot along with garden beds in that street corner. You have no exit in that corner anymore. Uh, and instead they would either have to go back towards the rail trail to cross over. Because of one of the biggest things we see with that, with this property is that corner of Water Street and Main Street. People see the, the wall, uh. Corner and they cross diagonally. Um, and so needing the ability to even cross there was, was why we wanna add the gardens.
Okay, so I, I think what we want to, what we would have to see is this parking information that you have here. Um, in a traditional parking table that we would see on a site plan.
Sure.
And once it's there, we can assess, because what it's telling us is that the farm store and the dispensary combined. Would only require four parking spots. Based on the square footage, uh, which is one per one hundred square feet. But it, but I, I wanna check that against the code because it seems pretty unlikely that you could operate those two businesses.
Yeah, we absolutely agree. We have room for more.
Absolutely.
Right.
So yeah, and the farm store has been designated that, uh, the Alex, uh, designated as only eight people at the max. Can enter the farm store. The dispensary is not much larger square footage than the farm store.
Yeah.
We don't expect there to be an allowance of, of that many more people in there.
But recognize that even if they were up to eight people for each destination, having four parking spots is not a likely. Um, adequate allocation. So we just wanna figure out. Whether we are, whether that's the, the right way to approach this calculation for two distinct businesses. Cause I, what I see is combining the square footage and. And I, I just don't know if that's the code, but that's why we ask for it to be done in a parking table, but according to the code.
Mm-hmm.
So let's take, let's please ask you to do that.
Sure.
Um, and thank you for, uh, you know, delineating some more specificity as to where the, uh, the parking spaces will be. And that seems like it's laid out.
And we really wanted to work as best as we could, uh, to not have to do any grading, leveling, removing of. You know, gravel or having to add pavement, um, we'd like to keep.
Again, we're renters, so doing, uh, assuming something of that magnitude would, uh. Would, would.
Would severely affect.
Yeah, we're, we're small farmers, so that, that is not something I don't, I think that's, that even we don't ban with our.
I have a procedure question again, like. As a site plan, and apologies, I'm very new to this, but as a site plan with the parking. What level of detail do we need to know about the traffic?
Yep.
As the, on the site plan.
You mean pedestrian or car or?
No, I mean, I mean vehicle, just because that's a horrific intersection as it is.
Yeah.
And, um, given the, the use case here, I, I've. That's gonna be a big concern, so I'm just trying to figure out where that needs to be addressed and trying to help you. Get everything you need to address in the next instance rather than back and forth.
Yeah, and I definitely would just love to bring to the board's attention that we have not been open. And we have occupied the space since January and that parking lot is filled with over twenty parking. Spots every single weekend from Friday to Sunday night. Um, and in a different configuration every week. So what we really want to be able to do is start to bring order to this parking lot, um.
The longer this goes on.
Yeah, and, and really.
Start to see that, you know, it's gonna get unruly over the summer. Uh, you know, we witnessed a Tesla parked horizontally across the driveway.
Yeah.
Uh, and another vehicle there.
A couple of things, let, let's get some linearity to our meeting here. One is, that's more than a procedural question. I think that's a question that this board has to discuss, which is. Um, something that is, uh, in, in, in alignment with prior discussions around. Uh, the, the unique special use of a dispensary and whether we want to evaluate the traffic impact. Uh, in particular in a location that already has some traffic considerations.
And, and is it specific to the traffic or is it, uh, you know, essentially we're trying to, you know. If we would like to use the parking lot as it has been used by the previous business occupant.
We do not foresee that, we do not foresee being able to take customers more than the, it's the previous business that operated there.
But there's a lot of references to the previous business that operated there. There's also references to you being tenants and not owners. But those are, those are, we, we appreciate you sharing that, but they're not necessarily. Uh, considerations that impact what our review consists of.
No, yeah.
Is, is considering a new site plan for a new use, uh, and it's a distinct use from the priorities.
Sure.
And, uh, and even the idea that like the community members or visitors park in your lot. That's a private commercial consideration of your own as tenants or owners, um, that you'll have to figure out a, a procedure. You know, like a cooperative procedure to prevent that from happening, if that's important to your business. But it's not really something that we are gonna enforce or take into account, but we're gonna take into account as the parking you need. And then you'll have to figure out how that parking is exclusively yours. For the use you have.
Totally. I think, I think the point that I'm trying to raise is that, uh. You know, that's, it's one of the more larger private lots in the village. And so, um, again, understanding that we are a micro business. And so our dispensary is very different from the other dispensary that's currently open in, in New Paltz. We don't have the ability to purchase a slew of other brands and stock our shelves with. As many products as another dispensary would do. We don't have the ability to do this, to deliveries there. What we have the ability to do is grow and produce our own products. So this store is very specified to what we do and. The clientele list will, you know, the customer base will follow that, but we aren't going to be. As, as busy as a regular dispenser. And I just want us, I just want the board to consider. Uh, just as a regular business and maybe, uh, not honing too sharply on the fact of, of the word dispensary. Because it is only what we can produce and sell ourselves, so.
So, thanks.
Yeah.
For that, and you know, we're, um. I think, what, I think, given that this is, I think, the fourth or fifth dispensary application that we've seen here, not all of them have opened and become that, but. Um, I think we are, uh, we're thoughtful about the type of business it is and also thoughtful about, um. Consistency and equity among the other applicants that we've reviewed for similar purposes. Um, and so that square footage question, the square footage question is actually the big driver in our code of. What parking you'd require and how many people might be in attendance. So that's the basis of the parking department. That the, the, the usage that you're describing, um, could inform the traffic impact. Um. Keeping in mind that. That, uh, that may be your business model, but it might not prevent. More people than your business model is intended to, to, with to serve. From arriving at your dispensary, looking for parking, trying to make a left turn off two ninety nine onto Water Street. You know, all the things that create traffic and, and, or crossing the rail trail while pedestrians and bicyclists are, are accessing the rail trail. So there's. You know, there's, I know that this is your business intent, but what we have to do is foresee the potential impact. In that, in that particular neighborhood that is experiencing already a lot of congestion and traffic. And the addition of a, of a hotel, you know, in, in, in short amount of time. So. We need to have a real accurate parking assessment based on the use and its combined purpose. We need to have the, uh, site plan add all the elements that Alex indicated are missing and then we can take.
Those have been added and submitted.
Well, where is this site? Honestly, it all seems to be as a flat survey, a survey plan.
Right, and then you should.
And, and engineers.
Engineers. Looks like this one.
And this was.
I think, and then, as far as our experience, I think that. We, uh, maybe overestimated the amount of traffic that was gonna be at the dispensary that did open. Cause I've heard that it's not that busy and that there's not a lot of traffic and.
It's good to have the experience.
Yeah, so. Cause everyone was afraid, oh my God, I knew it's gonna go to the dispensary, but it's in their own. I mean, it doesn't seem like it panned out the way we thought it would.
Yeah, no, and I think, you know, maybe that's something we, the board considers. I'm just also trying to understand how we, how we scope this and. Multiple, like multi-use space with, um, residential plus, um, farm stand plus dispensary. What it means to be in this particular place in the village with the egress that you have and don't have. I, I mean, I, like I said, I know that's a horrific intersection because I'm there every single day and I try to avoid it. Same as that possible, so I, uh.
We, we want to make that corner safer. Uh, we, we do a lot of, of traffic development.
Parking lot planters to make.
Mm-hmm.
It, it doesn't reference site plan anywhere.
Is, uh, right, so the words site plan. Or I know that the checklist of sixty four items plus the header site plan, like that, is that?
Is that what we're, we just having?
As we said, I'm not in, I'm not the profession.
Right, right.
You're gonna have, like, professional do two days.
One thing that I think, I just wanna say to the record, we, we have to, um. We have to make sure that before an application is in front of this board. That we're confident that it has all the elements of a site plan that we would need to consider. Um, because it's not the first time fairly recently that we've been here and we're sort of seeing things piecemeal. And I think it makes, it's probably challenging for the applicant. And, uh, and I know it's challenging for us, uh, because we're able to apply on something, but then realizing there's several pieces that still need, are, are missing. So there's times when that happens for some things or you learn more and then you need more. But I think that what we really wanna do is get really good at making sure that this board is seeing a complete site application or site plan. And I'll, I'll be honest, and, and I just don't see all the things that we need to understand the combined use of this property. We, uh, the, the impact that will have on parking. We haven't yet requested, uh, a, a study of the impact on traffic, but I think we need to make sure we discuss that. Um, and any other considerations about like the sculpture garden, the, the planting schematic. Just does it meet the criteria for us to be able to review it like a, uh, site plan against the Gateway District guidelines?
Right, and forgive us, uh, you know, we were, you know, under the premise that, you know, we have gotten this far. Uh, we're in front of the planning board for the second time, uh, according to the email correspondences back and forth, building inspector. And with the secretary, um, it, you know, to get in front of the planning board.
Yep.
To us, as the applicant says, we have submitted a plan that is suitable for review.
Yeah.
So, understood.
Yeah, I think we, we share frustrations on that.
Yeah, and I'm not saying I'm frustrated, but I am saying I'm highlighting the fact that like, we gotta try to make sure the plans are clear and, and complete. And then we'll be able to look at things in a lot more, um, thoughtful.
So should we reach out to Alex again and ask for what the, the board is feel is missing or I'm not? Cause we have, the, the schematic is done by a, a licensed landscape architect. Or engineering, whatever it means.
Some landscape architect.
Yes. So is that not an adequate professional? For that portion?
I'm, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure.
Cause I'm seeing it, it, I'm seeing it in different files. I'm still trying to figure out which of the.
I think part of it is that what, what the chair is saying is that. We need to get everything, right now there's multiple documents. It's this document has this, this one has this, this one has this. I think what you probably need to do is get someone who can take all those pieces, put them in one place. And then we'll just verify against the checklist, but I think some of the. Difficulty is the fact that it's scattered over various places.
Yeah, right, and I, I think that, you know.
And that's just, that's just my, my sort of guess as to what's the issue. I know. Alex brought it to me at one point and I was the one who said to him, the, the email you got, I said, these are the things that I see missing. Kind of off the top of my head, but I didn't check it against the checklist. So, like, cause I assumed that that had already been done. So we.
So. Just as an example that is presenting as confusing, so this, the schematic. Just as an example that is presenting as confusing, so this, the schematic. The thing titled survey plat. But is actually your landscape and parking engineering overlaid on the survey plat. Actually has a different parking configuration than this.
So this is, yes, so this was the first uh parking lot with the first engineer uh and then we we moved to this to the architect um. And we just, we decided that that excessive parking was not. Was not needed and that was also on grass area. I don't ever wanna deter from green.
Right, so what we're looking for is one integrated way to assess the plan. And and so when this one says total required space is twelve and and says.
So we can get those details onto the.
Onto, that is our final, our most final piece that Terry has.
And I will touch base with Alex and just verify the items because the only things that I have on my checklist that weren't. Uh information that was provided to the board over the past submissions were the drainage calculations for the stormwater runoff. Uh and the erosion and sediment control plan, um but we're sort of asking for a waiver from that. Because we do not intend to do new construction. We will not be paving any surfaces. We do not want to change. Any grading of the parking lot or similar.
Isn't the parking lot currently gravel?
Yes.
How do you? How do you stop the runoff of gravel parking?
So uh to my understanding, I believe the village put in a stormwater drain several years ago because there used to be a problem there. So there's a stormwater drain at the uh.
Entry.
At the base of the catch basin and you'll see, so you'll see on the survey plat. The catch basin typical, it's in the middle of Water Street coming out of the shale parking lot. So the catch basin. Is sort of like a gravel funnel and it all goes into the street. There's a storm drain and it comes out on the other side of our property in the hillside and it's the Walkeel River. And that's detailed on our plan. I know, me neither.
But it's never a good idea. To drain the gravel parking lot into a catch base. The gravel goes in the catch base. It clogs the catch base.
I completely understand that um.
Yeah, so that's why we would ask, that's why we would ask for that engineering uh and not ask for and not allow waiver of it.
Okay.
And can I just, uh procedural point, you have this checklist and you said there were several that were checked NA. Did you, when you, they were checked not applicable?
I'm sorry, I I I don't.
We didn't, we don't have any and.
Okay, yeah.
Me and yeah. An NA of anything.
So. That list of sixty-four you say is in different pieces somewhere. There's nothing there that you would say would be not applicable.
Yeah, I can, I can verify that with Alex and just make sure that, you know, the details, again, I'm not an engineer. You know, the detail of the stormwater drain, does that suffice as a. Erosion sediment control plan or uh we'll have to go back to a professional to get some a little bit more detailed.
Yeah, and and the site plan checklist you're looking at was the demonstration of the checklist? It wasn't, it wasn't like they checked.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I was like, I never submitted.
Yeah, we completed like NA ourselves, yeah.
That was what I was trying to figure out, like, do we have to disconnect on things that you thought were not applicable and.
No.
Should be applicable and vice versa.
Right.
So, but I do think um and I appreciate you referencing Alan had, Alex had a limited number of things. I think that. We just wanna double back and confirm that.
Okay.
Um and uh and you know, another thing, I maybe it wasn't explained, which I started to explain earlier when you referred to the prior use of of the building. Um there are often things that are required to be changed when the use by a new occupant. Uh for new purposes happens to a building and there are some things that don't need to be changed and the code usually dictates what things are and are not. And so what we're gonna try to do is uh make it possible for you to use the building the way you wanna use it. But also uh by virtue in the code, not our discretion, but by virtue of the code, we're also going to. Uh make sure that there's explanations of things that are have the potential to pro- provide risk. That there is um you know mitigation of uh impact and things like that. That may or may not have been in the the case when the building was in its prior use, but will be the case in in moving forward.
Um and just on that subject, did the uh board have a chance to review our submission for an operating plan and security plan?
No, because that's usually a little bit further down the road.
Cause they're in that. And I I believe this.
I say no meeting, I didn't really.
Right. Um I believe the security plan summary is fairly detailed and I want uh you know, it it's something that summarizes the security. Uh for obvious reasons, we cannot disclose to the public the full details of our security plan. There are restricted areas because we're dealing with uh cannabis.
Yeah.
Um so I just wanna make sure that uh if there's anything that. The planning board notices about the security plan, you know, we don't plan to have an ATM on site. We've taken a lot of measures to reduce the risk. Uh as for our insurance, we're required to keep a limited percentage of our inventory on site at all times. And I think some of these details could be really relevant to the board helping make a decision.
Okay. So please take a look at the 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 permit checklist and uh also please take a look at the design standards for the Gateway District.
Right.
Um because those are gonna be the two guidelines that are gonna help you bring.
Designers and.
There there's a whole section of the code that is specific to the Gateway District.
Uh yes, we, the historical uh.
So that's, so the historical preservation committee, uh we go through the process with them, they assign the approved.
Yeah, which we have and we have, and the paint colors as well.
Yeah, so Gateway District, sometimes they apply, sometimes they don't. It might be the location of parking relative to the building. There might be bike racks. Like, I don't think.
Yeah, we did actually.
We have a bike rack.
And now those are added.
It was part of an original discussion that we had and we'd have to like to encourage uh bicycle traffic.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Start a way to proximity to the rail trail.
No doubt.
Yeah, so there.
It will however be private bike rack.
Well, it's, that's ours, that's ours to feel, no, it's whatever.
Yeah, I don't know if that's gonna work.
Yeah.
So how many, how many bike rack spots would we be needing to provide?
Uh. I'm not sure according, but I don't think there's a required minimum for the according to the code. Um I think it's.
Well, there may be, so I recommend you look at the code.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Um I think the.
We we thought we had, so we will go back and talk with Alex again, cause he provided us a list and we submitted that. Completed list, so we will go back and talk with him again. Um.
Could, could I ask a question? I'm not a board member, but I I this has come up a couple of times about this. Uh pedestrian crossing, can can you just explain what you mean by like? Uh you you said we were trying to uh root the pedestrians a certain way and I just didn't follow that.
Sure, uh this is actually, that's the.
Cause there's, there's no designated crosswalk.
No, um no, however, currently. The way that the the space is, is that it is a large open space um and.
Long range.
That sightline from the rail trail, I think is what mostly causes that incorrect crossing. So even though the village has put in a a crosswalk over here, um where the rail trail is. Many people will cut through and cross right here.
So you're talking about people crossing Main Street, not crossing Water Street.
Yeah, they cross diagonally at the corner of Water and Main to this corner where that rock sculpture. Uh viewpoint is.
So you're trying to improve that situation, but.
We're, we're, yeah, by.
We, I just wanna make sure, we haven't yet addressed the crossing of Water Street, right?
No, and it's currently um it's, there's no, there's no, there's no crosswalk there and I don't believe there's even any signage there. And um I think that goes to just how we're going to assess. The pedestrian and traffic impact of the use of this building. To start to consider whether. Safety measures have to be put in place that would prevent. Uh the increased use of this building, or at least now the. Um documented use of this building. And the code, code compliant use of this building. Will affect pedestrian and vehicle. Traffic and there for uh impact of that. So. So and and part of that impact would be is there a safe place for people to cross from your parking lot to your front door? Without uh the, even the current traffic, the increased traffic.
So those implementations of that large planting in that corner, which is right here, as well as all these planters that will corner it off. This will force anyone in the park parking lot to have to cross at that edge of that driveway, which. Sets you back in a sightline more than thirty feet. That particular turn from the bridge right. Is probably one of the worser sightlines and then that left to the bridge. Is also really bad. So we're trying to force the crossing of that to the establishment further back into the Water Street.
Yeah, and and honestly, if we, if we had to, we would push it back to where the.
Yeah.
So these are great examples of why I'm gonna recommend that we have a traffic study for this project. Um because we uh we certainly have learned something about. The potential for volume of of traffic in uh around dispensaries that may have. Uh allayed some of our thoughts about the volume of traffic impact. But I think that um as we look at the number of. The number of complexities of this intersection. And you know, the the use, you, the what you're explaining may make perfect sense. But traffic engineers are usually who help us confirm that what you're explaining makes perfect sense and it's gonna create more safety. And then a traffic study would be what the Ulster County Planning Board or our own DPW, depending on the location. Would be able to use as the basis for whether it would need to do something different like. Create paint, recommend crosswalk or recommend a limited left turn or some of the things that happen when they get to see a traffic impact uh and study. So while we're very thoughtful about what we require of applicants, especially applicants as you described that are looking to start a small business. Um I feel like there's some, there's some engineering that we need to buy some and the only way to do that would be. With uh something that explains how this property. Is going to be, how the traffic will move, pedestrian and auto traffic will move about the property. And what we believe the volume of. Traffic driven to the location for its multiple uses. Will affect the intersections in that neighborhood.
Uh so would the village recommend us to the, like to the Ulster County DPW or when we find a private traffic study?
No, we we would ask, that we would ask the applicant for a traffic study. Um there have been others in the community, so there's. Probably distinct data that you could refer to as a basis for some of the assumptions you make, but we would ask for a traffic study from the applicant. Then we have a traffic engineer that would review that traffic study. And and traffic is a bit of a misnomer because just keep in mind, it includes pedestrian safety, bicycling safety, connection to the rail trail. These big questions, sight lines, parking.
Parking issue, loading, loading, unload.
Right, loading and unloading is another, you know, question I had about this application.
So our loading is designated, um and our loading can only happen in completely off hours um.
For the, for the special use that we're here to talk about.
Yes.
So that's a great example. Uh if that's for both uses, then that's a great example of something that would be written into the procedure. Would be ca- captured in the resolution. Um so these.
We did submit a breakdown of usage plan and operating plan.
Okay.
That kind of details the different businesses.
Our, our hours of operating or operation, our allowance of how many people, women are loading and loading, our handicap designation, uh yeah.
So we'll all take a closer look at that.
Okay.
Um so.
I I have to say, this is the first applic-, I've not been on board that long, but this is the first application where I've seen in a commercial property. Where parking is across the street. So I'm, I'm at a loss.
Right.
And even how do we do this thing?
We reviewed the code and it says that we should put it behind the building.
Yeah.
So unless you want to.
That's the river.
Uh no, that's not my point. My point is, you know, for me, this is the first time I'm experiencing this kind of thing, so I need a professional to tell me that we're making the right decisions here.
But the bank is doing that.
Yes.
The Wacobia uh.
The Wells Fargo has both.
Of the Wells Fargo, that's right. Right, but their, their plan if for parking is to include the parking across the street in that lot by Rock and Snow, so. That's very close maybe.
May I ask the board, how does a. Gateway District. Business operate if there is no ability to create parking on where the building exists? So that is a particular corner and it's a standalone establishment with no ability.
Yeah, we're not saying that you can't have part of that, we're just saying we wanna understand the safety and and uh. And impact to pedestrian bicycling and other auto traffic of having it that way.
And if.
Given that there's no prior approval of the way that works. To answer your other question, which I think was your other question, if a business proposes use and doesn't have any parking.
Right.
Then they have to justify the idea that street parking or other public parking is adequate for their their use. You were, you were proposing parking, you're even proposing parking that you believe would be adequate and we'll confirm that once we look at a parking table. That confirms the uses and their unique needs. Um but uh but what we wanna know is whether the way it's set up is uh is is safe for autos. Pedestrians and bicycles. To both visiting your business and not visiting the business.
Right.
Because that, that's, that's what our responsibility is, is ultimately assess the impact on communities. And and uh and immediate vicinities. And I think our, we have more heightened awareness. When we know that a community, a a segment of the community already has. Safety and traffic issues and one of the things the traffic uh uh engineers will do. Is they'll consider future development proposed for that area, which for example is a twenty-eight room hotel that's currently approved. Down the street and the impact that that's already going to have on traffic. Um as well as of course.
And we can reference the study that was done on the rail train to try to kind of bring that whole thing into a cohesive document like that.
Yeah. So we've kind of been moving around, but I think we've moved it forward by moving around.
Yeah.
Um I wanna just admit that I've heard you say that, you know, we thought we kind of met all the requirements, but maybe we didn't. And I understand this isn't gone as perfectly as it could. Um but we will get, we will get there together and might take a meeting or two more than you expected, but it's not uncommon. For a business like this in a location of this to take more than a few meetings. Um we do have a a couple of other procedural things. Um. One is we have to set an escrow.
We did.
We, we already have done that.
Okay.
And we, yeah, submitted.
There's, so I don't have a record of what the current escrow level is. Um. Mike, are you able to check on that?
It's fifteen hundred is the current escrow amount.
Yes.
So if we're gonna have. The potential, the the, the drainage and the stormwater uh might be done by internal or might need an engineer to look at your calculations. And assumptions. The traffic, we definitely need our traffic engineer to look at it. So that's where sometimes we ask for escrow to be increased in order to cover consultant fees that we might incur. Um we need to know which.
Um just to confirm that is the fifteen hundred.
So it's currently at fifteen hundred. If it's anticipated that we would have. Uh a new study, Mike, you know what, and I don't have those levels memorized, you know what we would be?
No, I would have to check. I'm just not familiar enough with it, but um.
Okay.
You, you could start with that and obviously.
Well, the fifteen is already in place.
Yeah.
And uh, all right, so what I would say is that in our next meeting, when we refer any of the work we are gonna be doing to another engineer. We might need to increase the escrow and make sure that that uh amount on hand is covering that.
And would you let us know before the meeting or after the meeting?
After.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. My uh proposal and the promotion to classify this as a secret type two uh application.
So.
Second, Terry.
A favor?
Uh.
Hi.
That means it doesn't need any additional environmental.
Rachel.
Rachel, thank you.
Yeah.
Um I know you had a couple of questions, Nikki, is there, is all of it, you think, integrated into the feedback we've given?
Yeah, I think I understand the scope and I appreciate the. The patience with the pack parking and what we're gonna need on traffic and understanding as uh my second, which is I. Understand frustration with the stop and start, but it. So it goes.
Yeah, we, we wanna come prepared, so we wanna make sure that the village is checked just as much.
And let's make sure the next time you're here, it's it's with the application, with the plan complete. And then you had a couple of things, Terry, you feel like when you have direction?
We're good.
Rachel's good?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so thank you both and.
Essentially, when you believe you have a completed application, because of the location, this will require referral.
It will and you, we, we probably should hold that referral.
Hold until you have a complete application.
So complete application.
Down the road, it will have to be.
When the application is sufficiently complete, according to this board, we'll refer to the Ulster County Planning Board.
So completed site plan, vehicle study submitted to you. Village engineers would have to review it and then it would go to the category.
Yeah, we might send it to the county planning board simultaneously with our traffic engineers looking at your traffic plans.
Is there, are they gonna need like some sort of public hearing or something pre or post?
They will, they will hold on that until we get some more. They'll definitely.
Because of the traffic study or because of the.
Everything, every application would get a public hearing, we usually wait till the application substantially complete before setting a public hearing because we want the public to have all the information. They um, they need to make comments.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, thank you both. Okay. So we're moving on, I remember New Paltz Apartments uh, has a, oh yeah. So moving on to uh, PB twenty one AX, Amy. Welcome back. And um. PB twenty one AX is the uh, what's currently known as New Paltz Apartments. Um, we can talk uh, just a moment about what that, be reminded what that project is. And then uh, talk about uh, how we're gonna use the time and my suggestion is that we sort of limit ourselves to about thirty minutes. Cause that's seems like plenty of time, although there are a lot of things to discuss here. So um, and Emily, I will not feel insulted if you interrupt me at any point and correct or add to what I'm sharing, but. Where we are with New Paltz Apartments, which is a uh, mu- many unit. Uh, development that is currently located in property that is known as the town of New Paltz, contemplating to be annexed to the village of New Paltz. Um, uh, at some point in this procedure, where we are currently. Is that we are in possession of a draft of a final environmental impact statement or FEIS. That draft was prepared by the applicant's engineers and 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 consultants. But ultimately, this draft is the document that this board has to complete and represent to the community. And 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 in consideration of all of the comments and questions that came to us. From the community that are being responded to in this FEIS. And so um. What we decided we would do today, I'll I'll first leave a moment for any questions, but it's fun to explain. What we decided we would do today is that we would all take uh, have the opportunity to review the FEIS i- in its current draft. And without the applicant present. We would identify areas that we believe require additional clarification. Or additional explanation. And or even that we know are gonna be uh, topics for um, topics to be addressed with the applicant. But without the applicant present, I wanna discourage us from getting too far down the conversation of. Uh, you know, an argument with ourselves about things that we know really require discussion with the applicant. But if we identify them, then we're gonna have a complete list of things that they can use a change or improve or clarify. And or um, what we will want to address with this.
As as a point of order, just keep it to a half hour and you wanna. I'm happy to go last, if everybody has comments, go down the row and then maybe be be duplicative.
If anyone needs a printed hard copy, they did drop off the one for a referred to, so I'm happy to be completely wild.
Okay.
Yeah.
Separate from this.
No, that's, that's just.
I just wanna clarify also, I think that the planner Xena is on uh, is observing by Zoom and maybe other members of the team. So they are, or 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 they may listen in after, but they didn't want to listen, um, but. Come join us at a future meeting.
Okay, great, so um. Yes, uh, Nikki, some order to the way we move through this, and I was just estimating that we spend a half hour um, on it. Um, I think we all have one, thanks. Um. But we could uh, we we could go person by person to briefly share their items, um. And uh. That would mean that if someone shares that item that overlaps with something you would have shared, please pull that out of your share so that we can only share. Uh, additional comments. And um, and if you share an item and someone has something to build on it or respond to it. Then we could feel free to do that so that we can, it'll be kind of some combination of order of people and topical. Um, and uh, and Mike. Uh, you'll be capturing the 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 salient points.
Yes.
So that we can have kind of an agenda that would drive our um, our uh, conversation when we invite the applicant. Which would probably be as early as next week.
Could I make one clarification?
Yeah.
So this document. This document includes um. The comments and responses to comments that the applicant has directed. And they've also put together a new, what they're calling FEIS plan, which is a revised plan that they propose. Mitigates a lot of the impacts that were identified, um, but our comments can be on anything in here, but they can also be. Uh, any necessary corrections or revisions to the DEIS, which was the original document, which is too big to carry.
Yeah. Okay, thanks Emily. Alright, um, Terry, would you like to uh, begin?
Sure, um, certainly one of the comments that I heard over and over again from. The public and from all of you and other people was the issue of affordable housing. Um, as chairman of the Affordable Housing Board here in the those in New Paltz. Um, let let me just start with that. Um, the Affordable Housing Board had a very, very good meeting, I felt. I think the board also felt with the developer. Um, their property manager was also on the call. Uh, we all, in my opinion, came away with a a a different. Uh, opinion of how the project would actually operate, all of us. On the board. Were wondering, how would this? Quote, student housing project and affordable housing. Uh, units come together as one community. Uh, we were assured by the property managers, which is a very large company, by the way, out of Atlanta, Georgia. They have projects here in New York State, so it's not like they do nothing in our state. Uh, they have a project in Troy, New York, they have projects in Syracuse, Rochester. Um, basically, these are all multi- multifamily projects. Some are based on college campuses, some are not. Um. The issue of affordable housing in these projects seemed to me, and I think the board absolutely seems. They felt they could integrate this right into the project. I came away with confidence that the property manager would uh, work along with the local Affordable Housing Board. And they seem to understand the board's role. We seem to understand their role as managers. Um, so all in all, I thought it was a very good meeting. That said. I think it would behoove us. And I think for the general public in this village. That if, as we produce our final environmental impact statement. We remove the word student housing. And just call it multifamily housing. It will be multifamily housing. Even their own profession, the developer's own profession, put it in the uh, FEIS. That there is opinions, case law, I'm not sure, in New York State. Their words almost exactly are that a group of students living in an apartment rented by the bedroom. Sharing common space, but the kitchens and living rooms have been defined as a family household. So. I think the whole thing about this being a student housing project has given the public the wrong idea. Anybody in New Paltz could rent apartments there with developer presenting. Anybody can. So let's call it what it is, it's multifamily housing. Some will be affordable, some won't, some will suit, some won't. I think it's gonna make it clearer to everybody what this project is. So, that said, my subsequent comment is that we eliminate the word student housing, call it multifamily. Getting into the weeds a little bit about affordable housing. There's a great deal of uh, detail in here about the number of apartments. One bedroom apartments, two bedroom apartments, four bedroom apartments. I would recommend that we leave that part out at this point. I think that's for discussion down the road by the planning board. As we look at the site plan, remember we're only looking at the environmental impact statement. We don't need to get into the weeds about drainage calculations, parking calculations at this point, we're gonna do that down the road. Correct me if I'm wrong, um, madam attorney, I I think I'm right about this. Um, so I would recommend we leave that out, the reason I say that is. I don't know. That definitively what the waiting list for affordable housing units are right now in the village. I know there's about a hundred families. I know there's no students on that. Are they? The one person families, three person family, families with young children, families with grown children, I don't know. All of that dictates. What apartment people are going to be able to live in and would desire to live in. So I would recommend we take that detail out and just say it'll be determined down the road when we do the cycling. I would also go so far as to say, I think this. Form of housing, which may include a great number of students. As time goes on into the next five years and ten years. I think we all know there's going to be less and less and less students. All you have to do is look at how many colleges are closing their doors in this country. Every single week. The population of college students is going down. I predict the future of this project is gonna change. And it's gonna change from less students, more families. That's gonna, so therefore, the configuration of the affordable housing units, wouldn't it be great? If we could build some flexibility into that? Flexibility such as. If we have. A two bedroom apartment and we need two one bedroom apartments, could we swap? If we had two one bedroom apartments and we needed two bedroom apartment, could we swap? I know that creates strain on the developers, I understand that, I'm looking at the screen because they're probably staring at me. I understand that's difficult to do what they call their performance, okay, I think we can work it out. This is not magic, it's math. So. Let's try and be a little flexible with the affordable housing. But on the same side, I think we've made, I think we've, as far as the housing authority, uh, the affordable housing board is concerned. We are much more confident that we can work with this uh, project now than we were six months ago and we look forward to. Um. That's my comment on affordable house. I guess my last. Comment in all this is frankly, I'm glad to see that it's smaller in terms of scope. Because as I said. The populate, the the population that the developer is charging is going down over the next five to ten years. And it's not going down. Diminimately. In terms of terms like that.
Terms of the word.
It is, it's going to be dramatic. And it's gonna impact the village of New Paltz. So with that said, I'm glad to see it's smaller. Um. And let me, let me just, I guess I'm speaking alone, a little too long here, I'm thirty minutes, I didn't get thirty minutes wrong, everybody, anyway. The one thing I'm still not quite sure about, there's enormous level of detail in here. I mean, there's detail in here that goes down to one hundredth of an acre. And I've asked this question before and I'll ask it again. Is. When this final plan is done, am I attesting to the accuracy of that plan?
What do you mean the accuracy?
But what if they're wrong by a tenth of an acre? What if they're wrong by an acre? All I have is zero opinion. About this, I have.
If if there are things that we want our own technical experts to verify, we can uh, refer to them.
Okay.
I mean, you're not. You're not personally liable for something, but.
No.
That we want, um, you know, checked, we should have them checked by our technical experts.
Okay. Well, certainly the one thing that I think we have to have. Reviewed by the city engineer are all their calculations of wastewater. Um, and.
But again, that's a site plan. That's a, is that, do you think that's something that we would want additional information about in the environmental impact statement?
Well, that's a good question, I don't know.
I don't know, I'm sure you're saying additional information, but we would maybe want our engineer to to check it, right? To to check what's been presented, we we did.
But are they gonna check it again? In other words, we're we're doing this, eventually we're gonna see a site. And again, we're gonna go through solid waste calculations, we're gonna go through wastewater calculations, we're gonna go through traffic calculations. Again.
Yeah, I I mean, I guess I'm just thinking this through, our our engineer did review the DEIS, right? And gave some comments, some things that they needed more details on, they've got that, so unless there's something new, you know. Presented now, I don't know that we're using that, it's up to you, okay, that that would be the process. Um, at this stage, we're looking for significant environmental impacts and mitigation measures for those. Um, and you know, we do need to do that at this stage. Um, yeah.
Okay, okay, no. Okay, Jeremy, thank you.
Yeah.
Started, I mean, it's okay, a little longer. Rachel.
Alright, um, I'll try to be quick, uh, I also, I listened to the uh, meeting of the Affordable Housing uh, Board. And I did, I felt like I really learned a lot because I think that for most people and definitely for myself, that that the process seems a little. Uh, obscure. Um, but basically, the Affordable Housing Board is entirely in control of who gets the apartments. All the developer does is say, we have these five apartments, they vet the people, they find the families. And they, as far as I can understand, also determine the price that they're going to be paying for it. The that whole situation, of course, that's completely antiventilable, the idea of the student rental, because the purpose of the student rental is the higher price point of a student. So I would imagine that if there are students that are going to be living there or whatever, that the affordable housing wouldn't necessarily involve them as being students. It would have to happen to be a student who's in one of the families that's on the waitlist, which is now a hundred, you say there are a hundred families on the waitlist. So even so, um, that if they're providing ten percent of of, it would be ten percent of the entirety of the project. But that ten percent would be uh, would would be going to families. It wouldn't be, uh, it wouldn't be like the students were getting some kind of affordable housing out of this. Um, and so to me, when I looked at this, I I haven't, I feel like also I'm gonna have really a chance to to look it over as as well as I'd like to. The first thing I noticed was that they they hired, it seemed to me like a new um, management company that wasn't part of it before. Now there's a Peak Made Real Estate, it's a company they're going with, it's a huge uh, corporation. Um, they operate in the United States and Canada. Um, they've got a a enor- enormous number of um. Of of properties, they're managing over eighty five. Um, and I looked at like some of the reviews because I feel like as far as the impact on the community, the the way that the the property is management managed. Is is important, and they have a C rating from uh, apartment ratings, um, it looks like. They've got some good places in uh, like they they've got an A, higher grades from than Syracuse, but all over the country, there's some that that rated F's. Really, uh, you know, long list of complaints from from the tenants. Um, that being said, I I haven't a chance to look over. Um, all of of their responses, the ones that I looked at, seemed somewhat cursory. And um, I'd like to be able to, you know, go back to the original, uh, the. In other words, to to extend the dialogue back, in other words, oh, there's, you know, if there's a complaint about the map or whatever, they say, oh, there's nothing wrong with the map. And I'd like to go back to the person and say, hey, can you be more specific about what it was? Can you show me the difference between what you think should be here and and what's actually there? Um, and I thought that it was good that they reduced, we asked him for like, you know, I thought at least a fifty percent reduction for some of the reasons that he stated. And also just the enormous amount of rope, that seven hundred and twenty four beds would would, so they reduced it by twenty percent. Or about twenty percent, which is is good, I wanted fifty, but you know, it's still, it's it's better. But I wouldn't, in looking at that, I wouldn't say, oh my god, they reduced it by so much because the initial ask is so gigantic. You know, that's sort of like, I I guess. Negotiating or whatever. Um. Uh, I still have questions about, you know, some of the materials they're using and. Um, and I'm not, I I still, I want. A more closer review of the environmental impact. And also to consider uh, with the town's request for an additional um, wetland inspection.
So thanks, Rachel.
Village also, the village environmental board also uh supported that idea.
Right, so um. Which of the, uh, so for example, just using the the management company, do you think that they should disclose more information about the management company? That because you believe that has a significant environmental impact?
Uh, no, those two, these two topics aren't aren't exactly related. It's more of a community impact as opposed to the environmental effect.
That's something that we can.
Yes. Yeah, I'd like to know, like this, you've got one company that's doing the the, you know, that's in charge of the construction and development. And you've got another company that's doing the management, and then you've got the owners. Are they going to sell? Or like, I'm just curious about that too.
Yeah, so that's probably not something you ever be able to address, whether they plan to sell the 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 buildings, but. What I, what we're trying to do is segment this into, what do we need to give them in terms of feedback to have a complete FDIS?
Right.
Um, another thing I'm hearing about that from you is that uh you want them to redo the wetlands assessment. There there are multiple references to the wetlands assessment and the recency that those were completed. Are you suggesting that those are not adequate?
Uh, I'd like to look at it further in order to.
That's a big, that's a, that that would be a big thing.
Well, I mean.
They're justifying it based on.
Right, it it was something that was, I mean, the the town E P B requested that the that the town wetland inspector also check it. So uh and we went along with that, agreed with that, so at least, at least that.
Okay, so let's make sure that that. If that, I know there's several references to what was done to verify. If that's not one of the things that were done to verify, then we'd be asking for that to be included. And then there's one other thing you said before the wetlands, um, but I want to make sure we capture, uh. I'm sorry if I'm not recalling.
I just want to note, it does, it does say in here, the project sponsor is amenable to the town wetland inspector visiting prior to finalization.
Okay.
Yeah, yes. So someone might just need to make that happen. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um. Okay, I thought there was one other thing that I was trying to test whether that's something we need to ask them to update in here or whether it's.
Um. Yeah, the sheer size.
Okay.
It's immense.
But we we recognize that it's, we have to be thoughtful about the fact that it's not necessarily adequate just to comment on. It's big. We have to, we have to ask ourselves. Is the environmental impact of its size adequately disclosed here? So how do you feel about that?
Well, I mean, not in agreement that, you know, it's a great idea to have. You know, five thousand people in line at the state park on the weekends or, you know, whatever. The amount of traffic, everything else. I I think that the impact is, it's it's a, it's a gigantic impact at one, all at once. Um, and the, like, the county P B was. Concerned about the uh, this sewage treatment plant. And uh, I, you know, the uh entirety of all of the accumulation of all the different developments. Um, impacting that and it's not, you know, whether it's not. When when this first project first came up, you know, there've been four or more apartment buildings since then. Or several more, and it just seems to me like. At, I would be cautious before.
Well, I think we have to be more than cautious. The question I'm continuing to ask is, do we think the engineering implications of the the building they're proposing? Are adequately explored in the document?
Um, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. So if you have any suggestions about what to add or who to refer that to, we will. Um. You good, Rachel?
Good, yeah.
Amy?
Okay, so uh my comments are slightly all over the place. I was, I don't know how, but I did read through the entire thing. I have trouble sleeping at night, so. This is really good reading fun.
Good.
Um, so my comments are slightly all over the place, um, and they're pretty quick. Um, the first thing that really stuck out to me, page fifty-six, this totally negates everything that you told me about affordable housing and this thing for families. Um, they're telling us that they're only going to allow one person per bedroom. Now, I don't know any married couples or. Boyfriends and girlfriends that live together that are not going to want to sleep in the same room necessarily. Maybe some people do, some people don't. But in a family, family, usually. Adult couples cohabitate in a room, so. When they say, we're only going to allow one person, this company only allows one person in a bedroom, that doesn't make any sense to me.
You're correct.
Okay.
So that should just be taken.
So, so I just put that as my number one comment.
Yeah, thank you.
And that is about affordable housing as well, because I don't know any families that are going to go for that. That's a little weird.
Absolutely, that should just be.
I I don't know. And I and I saw it two or three times mentioned.
Can I just mention though, I don't know if it's just a matter of taking it out because that, it might affect the calculation.
That's why. They said it was part of the calculation for the affordable housing. It was part of the calculation for parking. So I'm just putting it out there. I'm not against it or for it or anything like that. I just don't think it makes sense.
Does not.
Okay. Um, number two, um, they claim that they're going to have twenty-four-hour staff, staff. Now, there's a very big difference between having a person sitting at a desk with a telephone. That's staffed and having security guards, having a nurse, having people there to help people who are there. Um, for example. At the college, we have campus security. We have um a health. Office. We have certain amenities at campus to help. I'm not going to call it control students because I believe they're adults and they don't need to be controlled, but they're there to help them. And they're there to kind of keep the peace and not bother the town police every time a small thing is happening. There's a campus police, there's a campus health officer. Some people start growing up. There's things going on there that help buffer. This community to a greater community. So I'm I'm curious if we could have some type of outline of what twenty-four-hour staff. I'd like to see a definition for that. That's my number two. Um, so and the 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 top thing was more the security than the health officer, although. I don't think it would be a bad idea with this volume of people if there was some type of a nurse maybe around sometime during the day and when one of you offices. I think it would be a great idea. Just my little input. Um, three. Um. Oh, that's a health office. Okay, I'll just go to four. Oh, four. Um, I see there's one bedrooms, there's two bedrooms, I'm not sure about three bedrooms, um, but there's four bedrooms. And just my personal experience in the village of New Falls, I know, I know this for sure. A lot of people want studios. They're affordable. They're easy, they're simple. Some of their population's transient. They don't move in for a long time. They just need a place to stay while they go to school. Studios, a good idea. We don't have enough. It's a, it's a place where people can have privacy. So I think in my, in my opinion, I'd like to see some studios integrated into the plan. Um, number four, um, they say they're going to have a shuttle to the college, a shuttle bus. And they're also going to have bike path, which I think both are fantastic ideas. I am a big fan of shuttle buses. They cut down on traffic. It gives people without cars means to get around affordably. I would like to see the shuttle expanded. I think this is something that this developer could do for a community. I don't have to go into my details of my ideas for that right now. But just to summarize, as long as they're going to have a shuttle that goes to the college, let's have a shuttle that could drop people off in the village. And hey, if we want to really do something nice for our community, let's let the shuttle drop people up at the, at up the mountain at one of these parks. Because we live in a beautiful place and we have no access if you don't have a car and it's really, really sad. Okay, that's my comment to that.
But just as a point, the developer did offer that at for your horrible housing.
He did?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm I'm happy to hear that. I really like that a lot. Um. Five, I am very, very curious. This is going to be an R zoning, residential zoning, but we're being told there's going to be amenities. So if there's amenities, if there's food being sold, if there's laundry being charged for, like a laundromat, I don't know. There's some kind of a gym that you have to belong to, I don't know. Like, I don't really know. So. If there's going to be some type of retail operations going on, do we need some other type of B two zoning in there? I don't know. This is a question that we have to think about now before it gets too crazy with zoning board. Is it really just residential? Or is it going to be operating as like a mini? But it's like, is it going to be a little pizza place? Is there going to be a laundromat? We don't really know. Are the, you know, we don't have, we know some laundry machines in the units. I don't really know. I can't tell.
Yeah.
So those are just some questions I had. Anyway, that's pretty much it to wrap it up for me. Um, there are just things to think about. Oh, and one last thing, if you guys are watching. Thank you so much that you decided that you're going to do a model of this. I really appreciate it. And I'm sure the community is really, really looking forward to a a live model that we could maybe set up. Maybe you could set up a table on the side of the room somewhere. Where people could stop by and do it if they want to. Thank you.
Okay. Um, thanks, Amy. It sounds like just on that last point, if there's no. If there's no inclusion of any of those things that would be considered retail or other uses, then we should assume they're not there. Um.
We were.
The shuttle thing, I think is a great, yeah, but amenities wouldn't be a good support. Amenities might be pool and the laundry room or something like that.
Which is totally cool. I mean, you don't need B two, but if the amenities are a coffee shop, then it's, in some buildings, an amenity is a coffee shop.
Mm-hmm, okay, so we should make sure.
Some, there's a little grocery store in some amenities. That's considered an amenity in some of these buildings. Um, I've been through some complexes where they have multiple buildings and then we'll have a little diner.
Okay.
Okay.
So let's ask them to make sure that uh anything like that would be included in the application. The shuttle uh question is a great one. It's cool. It's already been discussed because it certainly has traffic implications and that would definitely be an E I S question. Um, so thanks, Amy. Um, Nikki.
Um, thank you. And so I didn't get much from being here for the hearings. Uh, but I did read through all the transcripts and um. As a procedural point to Terry's point, I just want to put one more finer point on that in terms of. If we as the board own this document, which is then going to be kind of like almost biblical as it goes through the twenty-five different. Boards and committees and things that it has to. Who has the obligation to fact-check this? And the reason I ask is because. I'm very used to reading any sort of claim being substantiated by a citation. And there are lots of claims in here in response to, you know, unsubstantiated comments from the public, which were wonderful comments, but. The the response is, I don't really know where to find out. And so the question is to Terry's point, like. What's our obligation to know that when we own this, how factually accurate it is? Um, and and how can we ensure that?
I don't have a great answer to that right this minute. It's a very good question. Um. I think if there's, if there are things that are not substantiated, we should ask the applicant to cite a source, right? But it might be a lot of.
Well, it's a lot of work for an applicant. I'm just, I I'm just trying to figure out what the different obligations are, not create additional burdens. Um.
I think the the reason that the regulations stated that it's our document is to emphasize that we are able to. Um, we can make the changes we see. The board can make the changes that see as fit. It doesn't have to persuade the applicant to do so. I don't think it's trying to. Make the boards, uh, I I think that's the point of that.
The board's not the representative of all the facts.
I'm just saying that.
Me though, with Nikki, that if, I mean, if you see, with, it's obvious speculation, I would think. I'm I'm not, I'm not putting my name on that. I would just cut it off. I would re- remove it. Um, there's plenty of statements in there that are speculative. I would definitely cross them out.
Or we could ask them to cite places where you think they should cite, and if they decide not to cite because they can't stand the conditions, that they don't have.
And strike it.
So Nikki, that would be something that if you could just like circle and say these six places have references that are not.
Six hundred.
These six places have references that are not substantiated. We'd like to see backup.
Okay, that's, I can do that. And would.
That'd be great.
Go to. I found it, um, the responses to be somewhat difficult to read. Uh, um, you know, in some place, cases, they were very tight and responsive. And then in other cases, they were a bit inconsistent or not quite clear how they were being responsive. To the question that asked, um, particularly with respect to the the affordable housing and um. You know, I understand that the logistics and the specifics have to be owned by the Affordable Housing Board, but. The way that the responses read, um, they, you know, there were many, many comments that said. We're trying to find out what the logistics of how are we going to. Um, understand what is affordable, what, how we're even going to understand who, how eligibility work. Uh, to Amy, to your point, like you've got single-bedroom leases, those kinds of things. Came up clear and consistent through all of the hearing. And the response was really, again, a little bit all over the place, but mostly. Um, will adhere to the law, like a a generalized commitment to adhere to the law. Now, is that, um. You know, at this stage, significant environmental impact and mitigation effort, I'm not particularly sure. Um, but so that sort of confusion was hard for me to follow what exactly. The affordability component would be. And then um my other comment is about EMS, which is. Inclusive of our volunteer fire department and our volunteer rescue squad, but also, um. We have a number of different law enforcement agencies who cover this community. Um, including SUNY, state police, local town police, sheriff, um, and. I I found the responses about minimal to no impact with this number of people to be. Quite not credible. I I just, I can't imagine, um, you know, that there's not going to. There's not going to be not just illnesses, but there are not going to be parties. There's not going to be needs for responses and. How do we fund that? And just as a community, we have a lot of volunteers who are already incredibly stretched thin. So that 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 response felt very um overwhelming.
Hmm. Is it appropriate for us to ask the chief of police and the chief of fire to give us their written opinion of this? In the next phase, for sure.
I would say even now, though, because you, the the planning board is acting as the lead agency on behalf of. All agencies to look at impact. So if you need input, you know, we've, we've sent these documents to other agencies. We haven't gotten a lot of feedback. But if there are specific questions, it would be the time to ask. Yeah.
And my apologies to the rescue squad. I did not mean to leave you out. It should be all great.
Absolutely.
Who is the three? Police, rescue.
Fire.
Police, fire, and EMS.
That's a very good point.
Great, if we think that's appropriate for this stage.
Do you mind if I just interject here? So all of those agencies that you just mentioned are. They're involved agencies in the secret. They're they're certainly not interest, uh, I'm I'm excuse me, they're interested agencies. They're not involved because they don't give a permit, but they're interested agencies and by all means, they would. Absolutely, their opinions and statements back to you would be very instrumental in in.
Yeah, I mean, the, in the case law, boards are encouraged to reach out to any experts or other, you know. Agencies, they need to get those answers.
You know, and and sometimes, you know, it it matters who the letter comes from asking for the information. Uh.
Or if you ask for something specific versus just, what do you think of these stuff?
Okay, well, I'm willing to draft up some thoughts about what I would like those three individuals to say.
I would agree.
Um. And either the chair or I'd recommend our attorney sign that letter. I would like to recommend our attorney sign.
Because that might be.
People, I understand that. They're also volunteers. Except the chief of police.
Yep.
But the other two, you know, there there's volunteers involved too. And, you know, we need an answer.
You can invite them in here.
So the um.
It's a little.
I think, so, so and what my, the reason I ask if it's at this stage the right thing, because I'm also very thoughtful about. The time we're on in terms of publishing this final E I S. And um so we would have to both ask for that and ask for it on a deadline. Like a thirty-day deadline max.
Maybe it could be based on facts of what our current level of responsiveness is and what our current. Um, staff capabilities or something like that. Um, you know, we have multiple other student housing and including campus.
Yeah, well, that's done. In the D E I S, they they did do some analysis of that. So what we'd be doing is asking them to verify the analysis and determine whether. The impact of this project is adequately a a accountable. the impact of this project is adequately a, a accounted for. And, uh, and so that the three agencies, the three interested agencies would be great to reach out to. So let's, let's draft, uh, at, at least it's not specific questions, at least a prompt that says here's the information we've been provided by the applicant. And, uh, these are things we'd like you to find on as part of the F E I S. Okay.
Well, they, they require additional resources, which I can't imagine that they wouldn't considering the size of the project. How would those resources be, uh, obtained? Would the, um, applicant be required to provide some support for um, the fire department, police and rescue squad if it's, if they're, if, if the development is going to have such a significant impact?
Yeah, likely, but I think that's the second order of conversation. That's. Typically, typically those things are paid for through the property taxes.
Yes.
Right.
I'm not asking. No, but we could also say additional contributions to rescue squad is gonna be a part of the application. That could be, but let's first learn about the impact. So, uh, channeling Zach, Nick, are you?
I'm just thinking maybe the question is if for them to review these three pages regarding, uh, impacts on emergency services and let us know if they think they're accurate.
Yeah, and my, my recommendation would be those three pages and the D E I S.
They refer to it, yeah.
They, which they referred to.
Yeah.
Anything else, Nikki?
Yeah, I think um, I'll come up with some places where citations would be.
Um, so channeling Zach who emailed, he did have questions around police and rescue. Um, he also had questions around the shuttle. Um, and so those are all things we can come back to. And then his other major question was affordable housing and the mix. And some of those, uh, some details around that. So that's what Zach brought to the table. Um. Let, let me just, uh, make one more point about the presentation to the Affordable Housing Board. The draft statement had countless references to rent by bedroom. That is off the table for the affordable house. That's not the way they rented. Now, remember this company, we're not, the, the concept of affordable housing in a multi-finality project, however you want to describe this, is not new to this company. They've done this before, different states, different places, they've done. So when that issue came up, they said, absolutely not. We rent by the apartment.
Is this media on video?
I believe it is.
I don't get a hold of it.
I don't know that.
You're the chair of that committee, maybe.
Well, through the staff.
You know, but, uh, I'm assuming that they're posted on the website, but I don't know that process yet.
But I listen to it.
Still in, that's, the by the room is still threaded throughout some of these responses.
And, and you're talking about keep made, is that what you're talking about? The, uh, the management company?
Yes.
Okay, I can, I mean, I, I did some research on this then because uh, I wanted to, you know, I wanted to find out. The, the major complaints have been, um, and we can, this is something I don't think is brought up before, but the major complaints have been noise. That the walls have been, that there's a lot of noise and that there are, uh, sometimes would seem to be unfair evictions. So, I don't know.
Well, so just to clarify what you said, Terry, when you said they will not rent by the bedroom, did you mean the affordable units or any?
They committed to, the affordable units will not be rented by the bed.
The affordable units that would be by the, the unit.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Terry, just to clarify, I meant, is that what the developer said or that's what the affordable housing?
That's what the developer said.
No, thank you.
Terry, quick question. Um, I noticed that they, they said that all the units are gonna be furnished in the affordable units. Will they also be furnished, you know?
Yeah. All the units will be furnished for the affordable units and everybody else. We brought up the issue of amenities. Do you have to pay more for the amenities? Uh, and the answer was no. Every affordable unit is furnished the same, built the same, and get the same use of the pool and the clubhouse as everybody.
Are they gonna be in a separate area, do you know?
No, that'd be separate.
It's all, it's all mixed together.
They'll all, that's not celebrated throughout. Okay. Um, so I'll be super brief because we're over the time we thought we might take. Um, I did have questions around the affordable housing. My two big questions were um, how they've integrated this definition of family to explain how they'll comply with the law because they lead with repeatedly the compliance with the law. Um, I'm comfortable with that expansive definition of family and household. And it sounds like this discussion got even further along that and, and, and your board's comfort with it makes me, uh, happy about that. If we were to leave you, your recommendation is that we eliminate the specifics around, uh, the affordable housing, uh, units by virtue of the ten percent and the types of units, which are now specified in this document. Here's the question I, uh, here's a consideration I love about that. The community, the public, was very focused on understanding how they're gonna apply, not just whether they're gonna, uh, uh, comply with the affordable housing law. So the more, uh, detail we eliminate from this document, the more we're not being responsive to what was the public's questions around, how's this gonna work? So I was glad that they included that table. And I was actually gonna say, if you're gonna include some of this detail, there needs to be one more layer of detail. And my layer of detail was that if you have twenty units labeled affordable housing of the two hundred, you're complying with that ten percent. But if the unit mix is so much different than the unit mix of, of apartments throughout the rest of the building. I did the math, actually. The twenty seven bedrooms is actually four point four percent of the bedrooms
Hmm.
being offered in the complex. So while it's a ten percent of units, because the unit mix skews toward one bedroom and away from four bedroom, it's only four point four percent of the bedroom.
I agree. It should be.
So, and they use this justification that also county's affordable housing mix has tended to be toward X. You have a hundred examples of what could actually be the calculation. So my feeling is we get a discussion with the developer to say if you're gonna include the detail, which I might recommend we do because of the fact that it's responsive to the community's questions, then we gotta either, uh, tell them that detail has to be negotiable because what you've actually done is only set aside four point four bedrooms, uh, four point four percent of the bedrooms. Or are we gonna eliminate that and just figure it out down the road, which might be considered um, less than responsive to the community?
Well, I'll just point out that I, the, as far as the seeker, uh, uh, um, standard, if we, we're not gonna know all the details right now. Things are gonna change, right? When we get further along. So when, when things change further along, the question will be whether the change from what we examined in this document uh, rises to where we need to take additional look at the environmental impact of that change. So if, I just wanna put that thought in your head as far as, because the, the, the town or the village law could change too. What, what it means to have a, a project that complies with the law might be different. Couple of years down the line than it is now. So, you know, having details in here doesn't mean we're locked into those details that could change. We just need to rethink the environmental.
No, you know, that's a third point because, um, if they are considering increasing, because ten percent is a very small percentage. And so they were considering, I thought, amending the law to increase it to fifteen percent. I think we should include that somehow. Um, then it should this change that they need to comply with the fifteen percent as opposed to the ten percent. That, or to whatever increase is made, uh, that, that, that it applies. That this shouldn't be grandfathered or something like that into a, a smaller percentage. And also, I mean, if they're i- if they're trying to make a point that, oh, well, we're offering, you know, less units, therefore there's less affordable units. I'm pretty sure that if the developer decided to offer a higher percentage of units or more units to be affordable, that the Affordable Housing Board wouldn't object to that. So I don't feel like there's, you know, uh, that the obligation is that they must, they must provide a minimum amount. But there's nothing stopping them from providing more, so they shouldn't, you know. And, and if they were asking about a strategy at the, at the meeting, and I think that um, what's, what worries me is that there's going to be this false, like, false, uh, economy of oh, well, if you are, um, asking for more, um, stringent environmental concerns, then you're against affordable housing. And I, I, I don't, I want to avoid any, any semblance or, or of that. Because it's, it just, it's not my problem.
I'm gonna, um, withhold my comments, uh, for the next time we're together. Um, and, uh, but I do think that if the biggest issues we had raised by this board were around environmental impact, uh, and, and affordable housing, and of course, lots of the other things. Um, I think we wanna discuss, uh, some of the level of detail and backup with them that exists in here, whether it's adequate. Um, and so I had a couple. And then there's a couple of other things that are really editorial that, uh, like they misspelled the word nuance multiple times and things like that. That we can just give as an editorial set of comments. So I'll hold my comments until the discussion with them. Um, but I think we have a lot of the big ideas on the table now and we're prepared for a discussion. Is it the boards? We don't have to vote on this, but just to make sure everybody's of the opinion that we should invite the applicant and make this a substantial part of our next meeting.
Agreed. I'm really opposed to having a workshop for this. I think it's very difficult to do other applications and really put our teeth into this and get this done. You gotta get this done.
Yeah, we gotta see if there are any other applications that are, uh, likely to be on the schedule, the agenda next, next time, Mike. But. I think there's gonna be.
Uh, and, and there is, there is, uh, one more, the thirty four Mill Rock is definitely gonna be on. Um, and I don't know, because if you didn't send either the other two applications for public hearing, my question to you. Will we carry them to the next meeting?
They, they won't have a public hearing in the next meeting and they'll only be on the agenda of the next meeting if they submit substantial new information that would make them want. So we would actually, I would recommend we don't.
You'll have two public hearings and probably two additional applications. And, um.
And then thirty four Mill Rock is a lot line revision that was already approved, but has some technicalities to look at. So, um, to Amy's point, you know, it sounds like we could have ninety minutes uh, in the next meeting with the applicant. Um, and we should invite them and, and get into that. Okay.
Would you allow it? I read through the whole. Two points, and, and one I didn't hear mentioned that I'd like to just bring up from.
Yeah, you're welcome to, Mike.
Thank you. Um, I see they're proposing the bike path or walking trail, whichever it's called, to, through to the campus. If indeed they're not necessarily gonna be marketing to students, I think that there should be some at least acknowledgement of either bike path, walking path, I don't know if drives to the level of sidewalk, but it's boring in the long term to include them here. Because not everybody is going to be going to the college.
Yeah.
Especially, uh, it'll probably be a mix of students and non-students. So
Yeah.
I think that transportation, yes, they're proposing the shuttle. I think the shuttle's great. But I think that's something that at least has to be discussed. I don't know the end result. And the other thing is uh, what I read is clearly they're paying for the infrastructure for the water and sewer to be built, but the impact on the existing water and sewer system, what will that impact be in terms of, you know, you have an aging system? So I think that needs to be considered in, in the F E I S of the impact on the facility. Uh, those were the two things that I saw that weren't necessarily brought up by the public, so they weren't addressed. But I think there are two topics that you guys should bring up that ask them to address.
Great.
Absolutely. That's what the town EPB was concerned
Yeah.
about, was the impact on the, on the sewer.
Though, whereas I think you guys have been every, oh, and just a point for what you said before, Terry. And Emily can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think because this is part of a seeker document, you absolutely have to consider parking and the number of parking spaces because there are triggers in seeker based on the number of spaces. So I, you know, I, I, I hear your point and I understand what you're trying to say. But I think those tables for the parking still probably need to remain in, in this discussion because it's a part of seeker.
Okay. I think, I think it's, uh, what we discussed before, that it's important to remember that these details are not locked in, but they're for our evaluation of the impact.
That's great.
Yeah.
And to clarify, Mike, because we had the same question about the emergency services. The evaluation of the impact on the underlying sewage and water system of the village, is that something you would suggest needs to be completed prior to publication of the F E I S? Or something that needs to be flagged as requiring further investigation?
My, my, I don't know enough about the detail of the system itself in terms of age and condition. My.
Let's count on the fact that it's bad.
My ballpark opinion is, is that I think it would need a discussion. Not necessarily a level of detail of we're going to do X, Y, and Z.
Okay.
But that there'd be a discussion of the impact on the central system. Because simply saying, well, we're gonna run the lines, you know, and pay for that ourselves, that's great.
Yeah.
But the overall impact on the community is the rest of the system.
Okay.
There's more on that in the D E I S. Right, no, of course. It's a, it's a whole carton, but, um, we may wanna, um, what we do wanna make sure is that mitigation measures that are needed are identified at this stage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so thanks, Mike. That was great.
No problem. Thank you.
All right, so we're in a position to, uh, bring these major issues to discussion, get the F E I S. Uh, all of our, I think we should think of the ninety minutes that we spend in the next meeting, all of the input back to them, such that uh, other than waiting for some responses to some of the inquiries that we might have, that we've given them all the input back to publish the next version of that.
I'm having trouble keeping up with it. And I'm also worried about, like, uh, version control. I mean, if I, you know, I, I, if we're all editing this and amending it or, or, you know, making change it to, to it, who's going to collate? And how are they going to collate all of this?
Well, they did a pretty good job collating three meetings worth of, uh, hearing questions, I think, to organize them this way.
So we're gonna give them all of our edits and they're gonna, they're going to take all the edits and put them in.
We're going to reveal it. We're going to reveal it. If there's a discrepancy, we're going to say something.
Right, but I mean, if, oh, I bet I, uh, okay, but I, but what I'm saying is that we have to edit this, make edits to it in order to, um, be satisfied with it. If all of us are making edits, are they going to then collate them all? For them all together?
When we say all of us making edits, we're giving them the feedback of changes they have to make.
Okay.
That's what we're gonna do.
Alright.
And if people wanna do that in, in writing and bring it to the meeting or whatever, you know, that's an option.
Yes. Okay, um, is, we have.
They're gonna, they're gonna see our minutes on this meeting, so maybe they'll.
Well, they won't have made the edits, but they'll certainly have a record.
To answer some of these questions, I think.
Absolutely. And they'll have a record of all the things you'd like to see extended up. Um, okay, can I have a motion to address? Second gun? A second from Terry, you all favor?
Uh.
Great. Thanks, everyone.